We'll open the debate public hearing at 6:00 PM. So is Tyler here? So there's nobody to present.
He is supposed to be here. I don't know about he should be.
Generally, the person applying for the conditional use permit would stand up and present their case. That's not the case. No. No, no, next. You're catching on. So I'm gonna give everybody roughly two minutes to stand up and voice their opinion. I'm gonna guess that most opinions in this room are similar, but I'm not sure. Alright, who would like to start? This, let me say one thing first. This is about the seaplane base. It's not about any other violations you might think Bald Mountain Camps has to the conditional use. So anybody who'd like to start speaking, feel free.
You just explained it.
That's what Tyler's supposed to do. The conditional use permit is requesting permission to run a seaplane base out of Bald Mountain Camps for commercial use, meaning he wants to use it for basically tours. Scenic tours.
A conditional use means specifically for that specific element, not anything else. It's just for the use of seaplanes.
He currently has, you can land a seaplane there currently. For recreational, you stop and have dinner and take off. However, he does not have a permit to run a commercial business out of there as far as seaplanes are concerned.
Has he done an environmental impact?
I wish he was here to answer that for me.
Are you gonna make the decision tonight on this conditional use permit? Or are you gonna listen to people? And then also, there's a lot of people that aren't here that live on the lake. And the timing I've seen over the years of people coming to the planning board for things after things quiet down. So I'm hoping that you listen to people tonight and don't make a decision. We haven't heard Mr. Filbrick talk anyway. There are people that would like to know what's going on so that they can speak their mind later. Myself, I like to speak for myself. Jim Proctor, been my mentor. I was a caretaker for family on Mooseluck for 25 years. I fish on the lake. I've got so many concerns about a lot of seaplanes coming in. One, the noise. One, it's a very important lake for anglers to fish. They troll. They're on all different parts of the lake. You have this northern forest new trail group that take canoe trails from all the way from New York. Vermont, New York, they come through Mooseluck. We have no check schemes on the lake. They did that for weeks for noise and keeps them quiet. Rangeley Search Trust has preserved the whole western shore for the beauty for people to look at and enjoy nature. The Stephen Phillips Preserve has remote camp sites all around the lake. People go there to camp to enjoy the looms, the quietness, the starry sky. The most important nice thing, I think, a lot of people that do live on that lake and enjoy and come and go is the peace and quiet. I've been on that lake where there's a bunch of loons together. Four planes go by, scales up, getting to have that quietness. Another thing I'd like to say is over in Stone Batter, there's a big old metal arch that was taken over there by certain people in the last. And I feel that should be loved that, you know, you don't have any right about that. That should be cleaned up by the people that.
Again, Jen, that has nothing to do with the seaplane issue.
No, but anyway.
Thank you, Jen.
Thank you.
Tyler, thanks for showing up great.
Yeah, no problem. Do you mind if I?
What I need you to do is I need you to come up in front of the room, present your case.
Yeah.
And if you don't mind, take these questions.
Yeah, no problem. Tyler Filbrick, Bald Mountain Camps. So what I'm trying to do here is I'm trying to give Kevin Delpee the ability to run tours off of my dock Friday and Saturdays, couple of weekends in the summertime. Planes coming in and out of Bald Mountain Camps all the time for lunch, dinner. Helicopters land in the upper parking lot. I've never had any complaints before. We've had all, both of our seaplanes there for many years. And there's a lot less traffic now than when my brother and I were learning at fly. Couple, last couple of years. Maybe a couple, if we did 10 tours a week out of there, that would probably be a lot. Noise, there's gonna be no more noise than normal when seaplanes go over. I've never had a complaint of Bald Mountain Camps, but that's, that's not up to me. But two days a week, Friday and Saturdays is all Kevin asked me to do. And, uh, let's see what else we have. Noise, and what's gonna be going on? I don't know. It's a great thing for my business. It's a great thing for the local area. Get people up here. It's another attraction to Ransley. Some people don't agree that we should be busy, busier than we were. We were busier in the 40s than we are now. It's just, it's another amenity. It's no different than anything else, all the shops or the restaurants or anything downtown. So.
Maybe you should mention to them because they don't know, most of them. How far off of the.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I'm good.
Okay.
No worries. I got it. I got you, Doug. There's, as far as the boat, I think there was a concern about safety on the lake with boats. So the way that the laws work with airplanes and boats are very similar. The aircraft or boat that has more control and power has to yield to the other boat or airplane. So for example, a sailboat, if you're in a ski boat and there's a sailboat, you have to give the sailboat the right away. So boats have lights on them, airplanes have lights on them. We've all been taught. You're not gonna land in the middle or over another. There's certain rules and regulations in the FAA when it comes to that. There's never been an incident that I'm well aware of on Ransley Lake. And much more traffic on Ransley Lake than there is on Mooseluck. There never been an incident on Mooseluck. Nobody has an issue with, in the winter time when we do a fly-in on Mooseluck. There was another thing, I think somebody wrote online about me that I purposely waited till after all the summer residents were gone to put this in. I've been working since 4:00 in the morning. I, I, I haven't waited. And yeah, I put the paperwork Kevin, Kevin asked me to, but trying to, I don't know where the town manager is, but.
So do we have any questions?
Yeah.
Tyler, just a little bit more specific on the time, is it two days per week?
Friday and Saturdays, it's all Kevin asked me to do.
Hours, hour to hour.
Not really, nobody goes. I mean, it's really when he gets a call and gets booked, he's really not gonna fly over here if he, nothing's going on or I don't have customers. So he did it one weekend and then didn't come back for two. And because there was nobody around and I didn't have any. But normally the tours don't start, I mean, even in Ransley until I would say 10 or 11:00 in the morning or the least. I mean, certainly a lot later in the day than all the construction's been going on on the lake, so.
And how about the months?
I mean, it's really gonna be foliage, so the, and middle of October. And then springtime, I would say. Eevee? I mean, not, can't really bank on Ice B and L.
Tony? Yeah, Tyler, can you guys commit to, because I have no problem other than the noise of balloons. Can you commit to the taxi wave offshore in a mile or so, like taxi quietly? So that all these people who live on the shore next to you aren't.
No problem.
Could you work that into your deal and say, we're gonna go a mile out before we make a lot of noise?
Half a month, cause the other side's a month.
Well, whatever it is, I'm just saying, I think that that might.
I don't, I don't know what.
Because of noise, in town I have friends who live in the coast.
Yeah.
And, and they love heat, they fly with heat. However, heat takes off out of the coast. It's really noisy.
I know my mom doesn't drink that.
Why? What if he had done it further out in the lake?
I don't know. There's been a couple of things about the loons. I have no idea as any.
Let's not get uptight.
No, I don't. I've heard it a couple of times now.
Well, I said that I have no idea. I'm talking about the noise. And I think that most of the people here are worried about, okay, we're gonna get disturbed. And how do you do, how do you mitigate that to get what you want and give to the public what they want? If that's important to you and trust.
I don't know.
The town to say, okay, we might allow this, but you gotta be out here. If we hear violations, we're gonna take those.
Sounds good to me.
I don't know. I'm just saying, that's.
So, two questions. You say that there's already been excursion run by, can you establish any?
Kevin Delpee? Yeah.
So you've already, an excursion has been run by? As you said.
Yeah, there's been tours run in and out, yeah.
Okay, so why do you need permission?
Cause it, somebody reported me and then I have to get, fill out a piece of paper and has to come before you guys to get it written or voted on, written off by them to add to my conditional use permit, right? There we go.
Okay, and I'm very confused as to what the season is. Because you're saying Saturday, Sunday, but I read spring, I read fall, like you said from spring through fall.
Correct. Yeah, so like probably, I would say, I haven't talked to Kevin specifically on dates. But I would say June through, when the fall leaves come off, halfway through October.
And how many flights was it?
I mean, I mean.
How many flights, how many flights?
Oh man, I mean, that's like saying, how many dinners am I gonna serve? And I'd like to do as many as possible, cause she's trying to make money and, and everything, but it could be one. He, he came, he came two weeks ago, the last time he came, two or three weeks ago, whatever it was. He did not, he parked, he went into a Quosset, had lunch, there was nobody around. He got back in his airplane and went up to Bingham and gave them the business and did flights up there in Greenville.
Does he have to go?
Yeah. Yeah. You've seen a lot?
Yeah. I've seen a lot actually. I think there's one where you.
Okay, 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 okay.
There's a couple more you'll.
Sorry, hold on.
Yes, I'm gonna be the first comment. Those of you who don't know me, I'm Brett Parker, I'm the phone question officer here in Ransley. What we, but the Filbricks do have, Bald Mountain Camps has an active initial use permit. For, it was, it was provided in 2004 to Stephen Filbrick. And that goes with the property, not the person. So that basically is transferred, contains, stays with Bald Mountain Camps. That is for the use of non-commercial flights. That means that planes can come in anytime they want. Dock, have dinner, stay at cabin, get back to the plane and take off, non-commercial. So that is what, what you may be hearing is just those planes. So that's already in cap and, and that's not what, what we're talking about. Because you're using his dock, it's Bald Mountain Camps property. He has to apply to a conditional use permit, even though he's not necessarily profiting from that. Although then customers may be coming in to Bald Mountain Camps. So that's really what we're after tonight, looking for a commercial. After signing an amendment to the original cup, they say after new completely new cup. Once the plane lands on the lake, it becomes a boat. And by, by definition, boat is responsibility of inland fisheries, whaler and fisheries. When, when that plane leaves the lake, it becomes property of the FAA. So there's two governing agencies that work here. So what, what, what Tyler's asking for is a conditional use permit for use of a commercial operation of this dock. Like, let me show that's, that's the deal with everybody.
Is there another conditional use permit on the business?
Um, there are, they've got several, the restaurants.
Is there a definition of commercial seaplane base? Set FAA, fire safety, does it need to have fuel?
What he does need to have is he needs to be registered with the state of Maine as a seaplane base. We do know that. And the state will come in and they will set the requirements for what they need to see. As far as we're concerned, we're just, we're, we're a land use ordinance.
So like firefighting from our premises? Why do you catch this card?
That would be your requirement of the state or the state firearms or not the Ransley planning.
Shouldn't that happen first, that the state come in and take a look?
So.
Actually, initial use permit comes first, because they don't get the condition use permit, there's no need to waste anybody else's time. So that's why this is the first step, and then there are second steps, go beyond.
But we could make the conditional use permit, you know, only good if it gets those conditions met. Okay, can I take the zoom once?
Hello.
Hello.
Yeah, this is Marty Plotkin on, on Barker Loop. I'm curious to know if there is going to be any limitation on how many flights. I understand from Tyler's description that there's no, that the, the number of flights that he's seen so far is very small. But it hasn't been advertised. If, is, is he going to bring another plane in, another pilot? Is, will it become a thing?
Uh, no, it's just Kevin just purchased his plane, just him. Um, and he just was trying to pick up a little bit of business just for himself. No future plans to run charter services, which I mean would greatly help my business buying people in.
But the, but the conditional use permit would apply, from what I can tell, without limitation to future expansion.
We have the ability to put conditions on that conditional use permit. That's why we're here tonight, to listen to everybody's opinion. And then we'll make the decision and we'll make any conditions that we see fit based on the meeting tonight, if we approve it.
Okay, thank you.
Next one is Ed Simmons.
Yeah. From my standpoint, Bald Mountain Camps is a wonderful iconic place and is fully worthy of our support. But what makes it so special is the pristine environment, the clean water, the abundant wildlife, and the peace and quiet. And that's why many of us who live on or around Mooseluck, Maguntic Lake chose to do so. Seaplanes, in my opinion, are antithetical to these values. And this proposal, I believe, should be rejected outright.
Thank you, Ed. Anybody else?
We have one more.
I'll catch you. Yep, I'll catch you. 59 Barker Loop. Tyler stated that providing a number of flights every Friday and Saturday would be similar to how many dinners you're selling. I fully disagree with that. We do need to know how many flights you're proposing to sell or charter from Bald Mountain Camps. Although we may or may not be open to, you know, having this over the, you know, couple of years. I, I've noticed there are flights coming in and out of Bald Mountain Camp. But if the business goes wild and you get another, you know, your business partner gets another plane, another plane, another plane, and they have a fleet of planes of 10, and Friday and Saturday night from 6:00 AM till 8:00 PM, you're running commercial flights. This is our happy place. How are we gonna live there? How are we gonna coexist? This can't happen. There has to be a limitation on this.
Thank you, Al.
There is a question on here. It says, how will the aircraft avoid loons and other wildlife?
I hope well.
And then there's another one from Cam asking, will he be able to use this plane for lessons?
Again, that's not, this is a land use. We're trying to determine if we can use this land for this purpose. That's all we're trying to determine. It would take all of your opinions and value. We'll put those, compile those and we'll, we're not gonna make a decision tonight, obviously. There's more thought that needs to go into this. I don't think Tyler minds this is not opening to spring, so.
Yeah, one, I, I heard one thing about the peace and quiet. My customers are a piece of quiet, well, on the lake. And I, I've taken, I've been doing a lot of things at the camps to try to help out with that. I mean, as much as I know everybody, the Bessys had to endure multiple years of beeping and, and noise right next to them as well as I did and whatnot. And I've gotten electric pressure washers to try and keep, clean my boats to keep the noise down. I have a couple of electric lawn mowers on order to keep the noise down. Like, my customers, I, I make a livelihood trying to please people and keep them happy. And you guys are all my neighbors. I love all of you. Help, you guys have all helped me, I've helped you. We've had dinner together, we've all drank together, and I wanna find some middle ground here. I'm just trying to make a living at this. Got dumped in my lap here a couple of years ago, and I love it. I went to school for it. I, that's what I'm trying to make a go at. I did not think it would cause this much of an uproar, because we've always had, we've had an airplane sitting with us for multiple years. And there will be, next year, it's being rebuilt. There's another one we have. I'm passionate about flying. I know you know my father was. He's gone now. I feel getting, taking advantage of a little bit on that note with some sort of thing, but that's okay. I wanna try and find some middle ground with everybody, so.
Well, I make one comment, uh, just to reiterate what Chairman Libby talked about, you know, so. One of, one of the dynamics within the planning board is they have the ability to place restrictions and conditions. And what I'm hearing is what happens if they get successful and every business is successful and they have five airplanes and they're going 15 times a day. The, the plan would put restrictions on days, on flights and things like that. So what we're trying to, what the planning board is trying to do today is get your opinions, get an understanding of what the issues are related to this issue, and from there make decisions on how to go forward, that works everybody.
I'm sorry, this gentleman.
Uh, my name is Don Mar. I'm a neighbor directly next to Bald Mountain Camps. I worked place back in 2001. I came up just so I could attend this meeting. I live in New York. I just found out about it on one day. Never met Tyler, but maybe that'll change. My main concern is, is the history that I've seen since I've been there of noise. And he's talking about if there's a complaint or any complaints. They, complaints go, fall on deaf ears. Now, we endure these weddings, you know, that are basically in our front yard. Over 100 decibels on a porch where we can't even sit on the porch on a Friday or Saturday night. Now these parties are supposed to end at a certain time. They normally don't. The party continues till the wee hours of the morning. We have to call over there to quiet things down in the middle of the night. I don't, I don't wanna be calling people and complaining. We were told we have to call the police. I don't wanna call the police on my neighbor. My neighbor, after I called several times, should get the point that you're making a lot of noise. So my concern with the airplanes is more noise. And he's saying, well, yeah, we can go out, we can do this, we can do that. But a complaint never seems to be followed up. Not once has anyone come over to me after I've had people at 4:00 in the morning in the tent hooting and hollering, which is like right outside my window. Not once has anyone come over and apologized, said, oh, we'll try to clean that up. So my main concern is the noise. Why we would give a permit of, for more noise to someone who can't control noise as it is now. I must say, this, this summer was a little better. There was no weddings. I understand, but we still have guests at night playing music by the fire, all this stuff. So to give another permit for more noise when we still can't control the noise we're making, doesn't make much sense to me. I'm a small business owner. I understand business. I understand what he's trying to do. And I don't, I don't think that he should be stopped in trying to expand his business. But when it starts infringing on, on, on my sanity and my peace and quiet, I got a problem with that.
You understand that you bought your house next to my, that's.
Tyler.
I don't. First of all, no one told me that there was weddings in my front yard.
I'm sorry, Tyler.
Second of all, that's a bad, that's a bad answer, right?
That's a bad.
That's a bad answer.
I apologize for Tyler.
That's a real bad answer. I do understand. And I'm, I thought it was a good thing to live next to you.
It is a good thing in the cops.
Tyler, I didn't ask you to speak. I didn't ask you to respond to that. This gentleman is obviously agitated.
Thank you, sir. You're not agitated, but now.
Anybody else? Right, you spoke once, so I'm gonna give you.
Could I?
I'm sorry, you spoke once. I'll give you another.
Dan Higgins, I'm on MIA Mooseluck Foundation Board here on that behalf. And I just wanted to ask sort of my question. I think I heard you, you work at Mooseluck. And I ask because the board, being a board, quick.
Yeah, so we have the ability to make the decision tonight, yeah. But we've already decided that with the turnout we've got here and with the questions that we still have. And I actually was informed 20 minutes ago that, I'm sorry, I'm lying, 40 minutes ago. That he needs to be registered with the state of Maine for a seaplane base. So I don't even know Tyler of that, but, so no, there won't be a decision.
Okay, and that was the ask was just, yeah, get the decision.
No.
Before, so as a board, we'd love to just, and we've got great detail from Tyler tonight, but appreciate the background. We didn't go, have we been down, up until that? And we can discuss that as a board, yeah.
Well, we'll take two minutes.
Okay.
I think most people though here don't understand or there are no reason they should. When a plane makes noise. Now, we talked about your duties here, what goes on on the ground, and that is taxiing. That is when the floats leave the, you know, before the floats leave the water and after they touch down. 100% of, you know, 99.99% of the objectionable noise of an airplane is when it's taken off. They get up on the step or whatever and they've applied full throttle. It's loud. The prop is loud, the exhaust is loud. Do that way out there, no more noise than a regular boat. You know, the, the key is we're on the ground, not, we're not talking about up there. Obviously, people shouldn't be, you know, taking off over people's houses. Do it over the lake, that's the best way to do it. So in essence, the number one problem is noise pollution. Nothing compared to all the boats on the lake, and it's noise pollution, and I couldn't agree more. It's when the plane takes off, when it's coming in, it's, when it's taxiing, it's chug, 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 chug. If it's held far enough and, you know, when it's in your jurisdiction, if it's held far enough on shore when they apply throttle, then I think everybody can be accommodated. That's all.
So, just wanted to, you mentioned exhaust. What kind of exhaust are you talking about? So just wanted to, you mentioned exhaust. What kind of exhaust are you talking about?
Um, that's what. Which is probably a good thing most of the time. What was the question?
About, you mentioned the exhaust when the planes take off. What, what's the exhaust issue? Like, how much exhaust does a plane?
No more, no more than a car accelerating or whatever. If you're talking about pollution, not even close to even a four-stroke outboard on the, on the water. Certainly not a two-stroke. These are four-stroke engines. I'm talking about exhaust noise pollution. I'm not talking about exhaust, and considering the percentage of airplanes that are in the air or would be, even if he had a full-scale business there, essentially, nothing. It's noise. It's ninety-nine point nine-nine. Nobody's gonna chase the loons or anything.
Patty, I wanna get to you. I got two in the bag.
Kevin, the pilot is on to like comment as well.
No.
I'll let you know. Rose Collins, I'm gonna hold you to two minutes.
Come on, I can't even go up to that.
Rose?
I think that I probably speak for most of us that we support all mountain camps. Probably don't have an issue with sightseeing, although I really wish they could downtown and take off out of a range like. I think the whole issue is, as this gentleman said, and I do have a pilot's license, so I can speak to this. It's the taking off. If they land and they take off more in the center of the lake, I don't think any of us will even notice.
Thank you, Rose. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I got one. Was it you?
Yeah. I just got, I, they already take off. We have sightseeing tools. Sightseeing base of our camp. It's part of ranger, classic ranger.
Tell the people that classic that.
Probably they have, you know, and if it's the same guy, then. And then my other thing is, I was just saying, this is a public guy, he's a different player, he says, my, my business. So if it's for the business or for this public guy's business. And then my, and I was on, he says, if they're claiming to fly in the south.
Kevin, the pilot is on Zoom.
Hello.
Hello.
Hey, I'm trying to figure out this Zoom thing here. Oh, my wife's helping me. But I think the biggest concern is the noise, obviously. With this airplane, when I bought this plane, I, I had that in mind for Rangely. And it is much quieter than, than what you're used to out of the Cove in, in Rangely. I mean, I fly down there too. I, I always myself try to taxi out of the Cove, keeping the people in, in town in mind. So I've always done that, and then, you know, over there in, in, in Moose Lake, I think we can do things like go out in the middle or take off away from the camps if we can. You know, I mean, we're gonna depend on the wind and the water and the people on the water too, where I have to take off. So I think there's a, I'm willing to compromise with everybody in this room and everybody on that lake on how it's done, and also maybe we just try this, you know, from, we have basically four or five weeks less, left in the season. Once the leaves are gone, the, the tours are gone. So maybe we just make this, if, if this was approved, we could just try it out for, for now until, you know, the first part of November for this year. And we could do like a Thursday, Friday, Saturday, like, you know, maybe nine in the morning until five at night. Something like that.
Thank you, Kevin.
Hi, everyone. Thank you. Can everyone hear me okay? Okay, um, so I think like everybody else, I have concerns about the noise. But I think there's the bigger picture that was spoken to initially, that Moose Lake Maguntic Lake is a pristine and quiet lake in the Rangeley Lakes region. It's also a resource class one A lake. I think it's earned this classification because of its minimal development, its clean waters, its miles of protected shoreline. With that classification, we have an obligation to do what we can to minimize any sort of development that sort of fits without, outside that framework. Taken right from the Land Use Regulation Commission's website, it talks about that you'll regulate development based on lake-related natural features and values identified in the Wildlands Lake Assessment, guiding development toward those lakes or lake areas best suited to absorb this type of new development while restricting that type of use on these high-value lakes. I think the unique development undeveloped nature and the pristine waters of Moose Lake Maguntic warrants our stewardship. So I want us all to very carefully consider this proposal. I appreciate hearing that the folks that wanna move forward with this want to be good neighbors and want to consider perhaps looking at how this may adversely impact the lake and its sort of quiet and pristine nature. I just, again, as someone mentioned, this is a lake that doesn't allow jet skis. And that in and of itself, when we just look at the wildlife and we as humans continue, continue to encroach on wildlife, and noise is a threat to them. They are already under enormous stress from climate change and encroachment from development and construction that does happen on the lake. When these planes take off, but also when they're overhead, they do make noise. Yes, sure, going to the middle of the lake may mitigate that some, but we all know how much noise travels across a lake. So I think that should be a huge concern. Another thing I just wanna bring up is, we all know what happens when boats come in and out of lakes and don't clean off the bottom of their hulls. We don't want to suddenly find ourselves where these planes that have absolutely no ability to clean their pontoons once they take off from one lake or body of water into another. So the potential for contamination, bringing in some sort of infestation from another water body is something that I think we also need to be speaking to as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, so my name is Patty Butler. I come to direct the budding neighbor to mountain camp. I lived there with my husband, Pat. So I guess I just wanna turn and share another part because like you, living next to a business presents some challenges. So I've had to do a lot of sort of work and educating myself on what it means to live next to a business. And what I've found is that this is a business with a conditional use permit. And again, I've had to learn what that means and what's allowed and what I can do the other way. Then when I can also have the right to maybe speak up about what's not happening as a conditionally permanent business. And granted, Tyler does a wonderful job. He's a wonderful neighbor. He's a good guy. But living next to a conditional use permit does have its challenges. So I have done some work, and this is what I kinda want to consider. Sure, the noise is annoying and all of that. But in your own thirty-eight point eleven in the town code of what constitutes a conditional use permit. It says, neither the proposed use nor the proposed site upon which the use will be located is a character that will not have significant adverse impact on the value or quiet possession of surrounding properties greater than would normally occur from approved existing uses in the zoning district. Now, we've talked about the downtown code. We've talked about restaurants. This is the shoreland district. So that business and entity should have no greater impact than any of us like living in that, in that same zone. And that's really the question. It's a shoreline district. So you also have four continued, four considerations that we've been asked to consider in your code. The size of the proposed use compared with the surrounding uses. So if none of us are allowed to make that kind of noise, they shouldn't be allowed to make that kind of noise. Intensity of the proposed use. If we're not using our property with that intensity, they shouldn't be using that property with that intensity. And then there's the potential generation of noise, dust, odor, vibration, layer, smoke, litter, and other nuisances. There's a fourth standard that you best, that it's, you have to consider that that one doesn't bug here. So I guess, as I said, I like aviation. I like all mountain camps. I like Tyler. What I think we need to consider is this is a shoreline zone, which is the strictest zone in the town. And this is not a use that's consistent with that. So. And again, I think another thing that I just have to use is comparison. I think what, when you ask for conditional use permit, it would be like if I were to open an art studio and provide art lessons. I'm not making, not, you know, that would probably meet these three criteria. And a commercial aviation does not meet that criteria of no greater impact than the neighbors would meet themselves. So that's all. I think Tyler, I think you mentioned, I think you tried really hard, and it's a pleasure to be next to you.
Bless. Thank you. I got to wrap this up pretty soon because we have to read these letters into the.
Yes.
I'm gonna let it go for five more minutes. Tyler, I'll give you two minutes.
Yep, thank you. Apologize for what I said about buying next to business. I should be a hundred percent working with you. I, nice to meet you. In person now. We, I do try very hard to end the weddings at ten o'clock at night, which is when I, I, I I was told that I had to shut it off. Try very hard. I have a hard time controlling people sitting by the fire pit. I do try to keep them out of the meeting. Because they do disrupt the rest of my guests at the, at the place, which is why we have certain rules and whatnot. Sometime I, I can't, when people step out of line, I try to control at the best of my ability. So I do apologize if we have to serve any of you on the lake. Without a doubt of this, like I said before, I wanna get along with everybody. I wanna try and run a successful business there. Spend my life on green. I also want to give you all the same courtesy of living in this beautiful area with, that is, as she said, pristine, wild wilderness. I love being outdoors. I do not want to see any more houses on the east side of the lake, anything like that. Super happy across Scangle and bought the whole cove. Beautiful. So I, I trust that they're gonna make the right decision. If they say no, go on this. It is what it is. It's not, it doesn't hurt me in any way. I was trying to help out Kevin. Him and I are friends, and it helps my customers with Mendy. Brings in people in the area. So they decide no, no problem. I don't, I don't object to anything anybody else has said. Everybody's got their opinion on it. Without doubt.
Thank you, Tyler. I'm sorry I didn't get somebody.
I don't really get a whole lot of that. I probably said it all now. Spectacular place, one part of my opinion. I don't have to add anything. I think all of her stated everything completely supported what she said.
I'll be.
Can I just just say, Tyler, I think that would be a great question. You know, like talk to people living in Belgrade, Geneva, they've got a really bad mill foil. Does anybody know whether, you know, airplane pontoons potentially have the same, you know, carried mill foil? And so how are we gonna, you know, how are we gonna research that or know that? Cause that's the last thing we want up here.
That, that's, that's really up to the pilot in command on that to inspect their floats and everything else. But you're a hundred percent right. It, it gets stuck on boats and trailers unless you inspect it. It's hard to inspect when you take off and then land. As, as a seaplane pilot, taking off in mill foil and weeds and everything isn't really conducive to what we do because you can't, you don't know what's in there. Mill foil grows and comes up in shallow areas, which seaplanes tend to.
Yeah, but it's also all through the lake. Once it's in shallow areas, you know, the currents, it goes through the lake. So you could be in a deep area too and have exposure in the floor. So I'm just saying, I think that's crucial. That any plane that comes in, you know, every time they come in.
You're gonna be the new inspector.
I'm John's logic. I came up here for years. I've had to mark. I haven't any objections to what is, what he's done so far, which I'm fine. But to me, it just opens doors to another commercial activity. Triggered the spirit. What it might do. Natural competition.
All right. That's it. Here's the last one.
When, if you're not making a decision tonight, when do you anticipate making one, and will there be another meeting open like this prior to that?
There will not be another meeting open like this prior to that. I don't believe. I think we will make a decision in two weeks. We have sixty days to make a decision. But I don't, I don't think, my son comes up. I don't think we need sixty days.
Real quickly, can people write letters now that the world?
Jim, I've gotta read all these tonight.
No, but I mean, I mean, if you're making a decision in two weeks, there's people.
Please, please use this town office. Please use what you pay your taxes for. Let everybody know how you feel all the time. This is awesome to see this many people at a public hearing. It's awesome to see this many people at any town meeting because usually I can wrap this meeting up. I think my two minutes. Yeah. Two to four minutes, depending on if I got my glasses on or not. So it's nice to see everybody involved, and it wasn't a sleight of hand. He filmed. Well, he was shut down by coenforcement. They stopped, they stopped the seaplane action. They asked him to stop, he stopped. And then he went through the process, which is applying for the conditional use permit. We went through that process last week. We applied, we scheduled the public hearing, and here we are. So this is standard procedure. But it's good to stay in tune with what's going on in the neighborhood, even if it's not affecting you directly. It might be affecting another neighbor on the other lake that you deserve support. So.
Quick question. I, I searched out this meeting and couldn't find on the website anything about this meeting. Is there some way that we can?
Blame, blame bracket.
Yeah, but yesterday it did exist. So, you know, as far as. I look at Massachusetts most of the time, so.
That's why you should write a letter to the town manager and ask him because I don't know the answer. I just show up to you twice a month and. Thank you. Thank you, everybody. I'll listen to Marty take it. So if we've gotta read these letters in the meeting, those of you that don't wanna stay and listen to them. So.
Thank you very much.
Yeah. Read. Two minutes, we're gonna grab a letter. And. So wait, it's hard on me.
Because of me. I would all get.
Just pick one and move it off. There. Thank you.
Thank you.
I wanna send a letter. Heard it out. So we're gonna want to say.
I'm sure if you find the letter, I'll supply the question. The counter rate, please counter rate the dog calls and send it to the town.
Thank you very much.
Jeff, Jeff, excuse me. I don't either.
There was no notice at all. Nothing in my box.
Was there notice?
Good five hundred feet. So if you're outside that five hundred, you didn't get.
I have to pace it out, but we're good. Even the notice in the post office is hidden.
Really?
And it doesn't say anything about what's happening. It doesn't say who's, who's petition or what the petition is about. There's a bunch of numbers and nothing else. So how would anybody know it's important?
Write that letter to the town manager. Let him know. It was a pleasure.
Very good to meet you.
Thank you. Who wants to start? I'll start.
You want to read one?
Yeah, go ahead, read.
Okay, um, the first letter that came to our attention is from Sarah Cass through Zach, which I may be pushing the name for proper more on. I am ready to ask that you provide more transparency and consideration to the public regarding Bald Mountain Camps application to become a commercial seaplane hub before making a decision on its application and to consider my concerns. As we all know, Musluk Laguntik Lake is a pristine and quiet lake in the Range Lakes region. As one of Maine's largest lakes, it is a natural wonder enjoyed by men. It has minimal development, clean water, and miles of protected shoreline and embodied nature. All contribute to why the state of Maine has made it a resource class one A lake. Resource class one A lakes are of statewide significance as they possess multiple outstanding natural values. Within that designation, the Land Use Regulation Commission works to regulate development based on lake-related natural features and values identified in the Wildland's Lake Assessment, guiding development toward, toward those lakes or lake areas best suited to absorb new development while restricting use of certain high-value lakes. The unique undeveloped nature and pristine waters of Musluk Laguntik warrants our stewardship. For example, the Steven Phillips Memorial Reserve grants protection in perpetuity to the lake and all the wildlife it sustains, as well as our ongoing enjoyment of its quiet and pristine environment. I believe the vast majority of all who live, who love this lake, share this sense of stewardship for generations to come. If this proposal increases seaplane activity, it would not only impact Musluk Laguntik or seaplanes landing here, in turn, means they look for other remote lakes to fly to, impacting the quiet and natural beauty that draws millions of tourists to our region. Shockingly, seaplanes and other small planes are allowed to use lead fuel. The EPA announced in twenty twenty-three that small aircraft still using lead fuel are a public health threat and contribute, contribute to air pollution. Lead accumulates in soils and discharges into our pristine water bodies. A direct quote from the EPA's website, aircraft that use leaded fuel are the dominant source of lead emissions in our air. Emissions from the hundred and ninety thousand US privately owned airplanes operating on leaded fuel account for about seventy percent of the lead entering the atmosphere. In twenty twenty-one, a watershed study found that children living in affected communities near the Reed Hillview Airport in Santa Clara County had blood level increases higher than the children living in Flint, Michigan during the peak of the Flint water crisis. This study should be sounding alarms in all our heads as we consider to, consider the cumulative impacts of ongoing lead pollution raining down on us and this pristine environment from small aircraft activity overhead and landing in our lakes. It is incumbent on this board to heavily weigh the potential impact of degradation of lake quality on a resource class one A lake. With proven increased levels of lead from emissions from similar aircraft and the increased risk of an actual spill of lead fuel, it seems almost impossible to find a scenario where, where an increase of seaplane landings should be permitted. The activity of simply refueling is not benign, with occasional minor spillage from refueling and the incredible risks should be a large spill or leak occur. We all know noise pollution impacts wildlife. Thankfully, Musluk Laguntik does not allow jet skis. This lake offers a much needed respite for our stressed animal species as they deal with excess noise elsewhere and other stresses such as climate change and ongoing loss of habitat from human encroachment. Many waterfront property owners, myself included, choose Musluk because of this restriction. We want to continue to foster wildlife spaces less impacted by noise pollution. An increase in seaplanes is an affront to this critical quiet zone for wildlife. What other overs, oversight and regulatory boards weigh? What other oversight and regulatory boards weigh in on this proposal? Does Maine Department of Inland Fisheries and Wildlife get involved? Is a great ponds permit application submitted? If so, how does this public gain access to these documents? We cannot be complacent if this permit could cause an increase in seaplane activity in the region. We must do what we can to protect our children in the beautiful natural environment that sustains us from lead pollution and noise disruption. I am asking that this board not vote in favor of any permit application that would indirectly or indirectly cause an increase of seaplane activity. While an increase of such inactivity may benefit a scant number of private businesses, the risk of lead pollution to our children, our waterways, our fisheries, and wildlife is simply too great. The large increase of noise pollution and potential for contamination and infiltration from other water bodies as the pontoons cannot be cleaned between landings only furthers the reason for saying no. I think most of the public and stakeholders in the Range Lakes region would agree that Musluk Laguntik deserves this protection. So again, I ask for consideration regarding all these negative impacts and for more information and transparency to the public before a decision is made.
Thank you, Reeve. You took a long time. I'm gonna be the one to talk.
Uh, this, this letter was written and sent in by David Kayham. Dear Mr. Parker or Mr. Colsey, Unfortunately, I will not be to attend tonight's meeting in person or Zoom due to family commitments. I would like to raise the following points to consideration. Just as jet skis are banned from Musluk with the intention of preserving the tranquility of the special lake, so should the significant noise intrusion of multiple takeoffs and landings coupled with obulatory low-level flights be an unwelcome addition to our environment that deserves our best effort as long-term preservation. Remember too, the military has abandoned low-level fighter training missions over Musluk. For those who wish to enjoy the aerial view of Musluk and nearby vistas, the facilities and range we are available, a new float plane facility that requires low-level flight over Musluk appears super close. We all have, respectively, we all have responsibility to preserve what we can, balancing preservation carefully with human activity. Thus, I would argue the application to establish a float plane base at BMC should be turned down.
This next one is um, from Deborah and Emmett Lesterat. There's a duplicate in there, which is Ellen O'Beirhym's response to her. So I'll read. Dear Mr. Parker, this has come to my attention rather last minute that there is a proposal before the planning board meeting tonight at BMC for conditional use permit allowing BMC camps to enable third-party vendors to schedule seaplane excursion, excursions using BMC as a base. I cannot emphasize enough how inappropriate I think this is. In light of all the efforts the Range Lakes Heritage Trust, the MIA, and Health and Wellness Center have done to preserve and enrich the Range Lakes community, it seems encourage us to consider the introduction of a seaplane-based business on Musluk Laguntik. These are for obvious reasons, both environmentally and safety concerns. It is inappropriate to have low-flying aircraft take off and land multiple times a day over residential and conserved areas. There is already mooring space for seaplanes on not only the Range Lakes Airport but on Range Lakes and Musluk currently. I think the introduction of outside vendors running seaplane operations is an entirely different situation and one that can only undermine everything the trust and MIA. Indeed, the state of Maine has been trying to do to restore and conserve Range Lakes region with regards.
They don't get to read Ellen's response to that, right?
No.
Valerie's the one from Sabrina Suzie Q Castle. Hi Sabrina Suzie Q Castle, a resident of Awasak opposed the conditional use permit for one twenty-five Bald Mountain Road being discussed on September the tenth, twenty twenty-four at six P M by the town office. Without credible peer-reviewed literature on the impact of low-flying fixed-wing aircraft, in particular float planes, I am concerned for the local wildlife, including waterfowl, raptors, ungulates, and fish populations. Furthermore, as someone who personally places a high value on the lack of noise pollution, I do not want float planes buzzing around, taking off, and landing near my home.
Okay, I'm gonna read these three little ones. Oh, go for it, yeah.
Hi Virginia Castle of five forty-one Mingle Loop Road. I'm opposed to the conditional use permit that is being discussed for one twenty-five Bald Mountain Road this evening. I Toby Castle of five forty-one Mingle Loop Road. I'm opposed to the conditional use permit that is being discussed for one twenty-five Bald Mountain Road this September tenth, twenty twenty-four. I Gabrielle Castle, resident of sixty-seven Bald Mountain Roads, opposed the conditional use permit in discussion at the September tenth, twenty twenty-four public here.
Read this last one. Zach Los, Barbara Los. Hi Barbara Elglaas, owner of sixty-seven Bald Mountain Road, opposed the conditional use permit that is being discussed for one twenty-five Bald Mountain Road across Maine. Thank you. I'm gonna close this meeting at seven oh four. Yeah. Thank you. So. I'm gonna open this meeting, regular, regular meeting at seven oh four P M and we all stand. I believe it is to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'll be standing up. Third, declare all the disposed conflict, conflict of interest, any adjustments to the agenda, um, public to speak on non-agenda items. Review of minutes, August twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-four, regular meeting. I need a motion to accept those minutes. I'll make a motion to accept the minutes from August twenty eighth, two thousand twenty-four, second.
I'll second.
All in favor? Correspondence? None. New business shoreline zoning application, one twelve West Orset Road. That zero three four lot zero zero seven, set the application as complete, schedule public hearing. So we're gonna just schedule a site? Oh, schedule public hearing. So we'll do the application as complete now? I don't have that.
Double check, that's it.
Hey, last. This is, we're not gonna read through, I guess. We just have to accept the. I was looking for the conditional use. Did you guys have a chance to look at this?
Yeah.
The motion to accept. I make a motion to accept this. All in favor? Ah, sorry, second?
I second it.
All in favor? Thank you. Schedule sidewalk? September twenty-third? At five thirty?
So I would recommend, um, it's a long walk downhill.
Okay.
And the engineer is gonna be there and it's a pretty elaborate setup. So I would suggest five fifteen.
Five?
Five fifteen.
Five fifteen. What's the date?
Nine twenty-five?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Alright, next, conditional, continuing business, conditional use permit, one twenty-five Bald Mountain Road, map zero one eight lot zero zero three, finding effects. I'll make a motion that we table this until next meeting to do our diligence and gather all facts. So that's September twenty-fifth?
I second that.
All in favor? Next is shoreline zoning application sixty-three Lake House Road, map zero zero eight lot zero one one. Table item pending receipt of permit by rule. Next meeting is September twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four, six P M with a sidewalk. I'll adjourn the meeting at seven oh eight.
Yeah.
You will. Oh. Any? All in favor?
I'll second that.
Alright. All in favor?
Anyway, I'm just ready to go.